All in favor live. Commissioner Freeman, how do you vote? Commissioner Rigby? Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Thank you. It's approved. The next item is 2668. It's Andrew Callicut. He's filed a request for a special exception, provided in Section 2.6.7. It's a structure height in a traditional neighborhood business for Oxford Farms Memory Care property located at Southmore Boulevard. Yes, sir.
All right. The subject property is located on approximately four and a half acres in the Oxford Farms development. It's on the west side of Southmore, South Farmview Drive, just south of the Oxford Pediatric Group building. The applicant is proposing to construct a memory care facility that will work in conjunction with an already approved senior living facility. A site plan is currently under review for this property. The property is also subject to case 2663, which was a special exception request for the nursing home. The current request is for a single-story structure in a T and B district. As allowed in Section 2.6.7 of the Land Development Code, a building of one story may be allowed by special exception in a T and B zoning district. The applicant states that memory care facilities need to be located on the ground floor for safety reasons and that other one-story medical offices exist in the immediate vicinity of the T and B district. Staff agrees for the need to have this use be located on a ground floor for safety reasons from the standpoint of both resident self-endangerment and from fire safety, and acknowledges that other single-story offices do exist in the immediate vicinity, including Oxford Pediatric and Oxford Clinic for Women. The architectural elevations show a front facade that has the appearance of a building that is larger than one story. The roof line is approximately 34 feet, and there are dormer windows that give the appearance of a potential second story. Because of the need for this used-to-be-a-ground-floor use, the existence of other single-story medical offices in the immediate vicinity, and the presence of architectural elements that give the appearance of a second floor, staff recommends approval of the requested special exception.
Thank you. Any questions? Again, this is Jeff Williams. He's very busy. Jeff is here to answer any questions, if you have any, virtually. Any questions from the commission here? All right. Hearing none, I will entertain a motion as to the special exception request to actually lower or to remove the requirement for a second story in a T and B. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the special exception request in case 2668.
There's a motion to approve. Is there a second?
A second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor live. Commissioner Rigby, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Thank you. 2668 is approved. Excuse me. Next is public here for case 2669. It's Panola Rentals, and it's requests for variance from Section 5.5.2.2 of the code regarding fences and exterior walls for property located at Ricky Britt Drive, Ricky Britt Senior Boulevard.
Yes, sir.
Gray.
Panola Rentals LLC is located on the west side of Ricky D. Britt Senior Boulevard. Also has frontage on Highway 6 West. It's part of two contiguous parcels that total just over five acres. The applicant is requesting a variance for a barbed wire, barbed wire to be added along the top of a proposed fence. Currently, Moore Brothers, a used car dealer occupies the property. The lot has, like I said, frontage on Highway 6 West and Ricky D. Britt Senior Boulevard. The tract that borders Ricky Britt Boulevard is an area where they store cars for maintenance and repair. So go back to June 2017. The applicant requested a fence-high variance to construct a six-foot-tall chain link fence along their property, fronting the Boulevard. The applicant stated that there had been issues with vehicular theft on the property. The planning commission approved the request with conditions that the fence be black vinyl clad with black slats for the entire length of the chain link to the east, south, and north, and that evergreen screening be installed with hollies and boxwoods along the fence to the east and south, and that landscaping be irrigated. The site plan provided indicated an existing fence along the west property line bordering the University of Mississippi property that is six feet tall. The current proposed site plan includes a call-out for the same fence that states that it has barbed wire along the top of that fence. The applicant's engineers confirmed that this fence was constructed before the area was incorporated into the city. So now, three years later, the applicant is now planning to install the fence that they received the variance for three years ago in the same location, but is now proposing to install with barbed wire as well on top of the fence. Section 5.5.2.2 of Land Development Code states barbed wire, woven wire, or electric fencing may be used in agricultural or industrial applications only. The section detailed drawing provided by the applicant at the bottom of the site plan indicates that even at maturity, the barbed wire will be visible over the evergreen hollies. Staff recommends denial of the requested variance and believes that the applicant should install the fence to address the stated issues before proceeding with incorporating barbed wire. Should the planning commission consider approving the variance, staff recommends four conditions laid out in your report. Jeff Williams is here as well.
I think Gray's done a great job explaining exactly what we're asking here. I would like to clarify that the evergreens are not necessarily going to stop growing at six feet. I think they're rated for six to eight feet. So it possibly could hide the barbed wire. I think that the owner was under the assumption that he had approval for the barbed wire. Details showed the angled arm on the original detail. However, it was never discussed. So when he asked about that, I contacted planning, and it's when we got to the section where it says not allowed in anything except industrial and agricultural. So if you've been out there, you see he's starting to store a lot more vehicles, and he has had a lot of things stolen, not necessarily a whole vehicle, but a lot of things stolen off the vehicle. So he's looking for that extra bit of security. And as Gray mentioned, the fence along the west side has got the barbed wire on the top now. So we would respectfully ask that you grant this variance.
Is it, and this is, Jeff, I'm not necessarily, there is no fence to the east nor the south, correct? Right now?
That is correct.
And this is a question in general that I'm throwing out. Is it possible that they build the fence without barbed wire and then come back and say, "It didn't work. We need barbed wire." Barbed wire? I mean, they would get a, it would just be another request for variance, right?
Exactly, it was before you write up, because under the variance that was granted in 2017, they're allowed to build a fence.
Sure.
They just haven't. They just haven't.
That's my particular taste, is to, let's see if the fence works first. Just build it and see if that works. And if it doesn't, you may have a reason to come back and say, "It just didn't work. The people who were committing these acts are quite the leapers."
As a point of clarity, I asked that same question because he's been wanting to get started for a couple of months now, and it came up this, and I said, "Well, you got to get this variance to put the wire on it." So I asked the fence contractor about putting it up, and then if we got the variance, could he add it on there? He said, "It's a totally different set of posts and corner posts to add the wire to the town." I'm not saying it's impossible, but that's what I was told.
I agree with Brian. I think I would rather see a fence first and then come back, especially given that the original approval was 2017. So I would just, I would agree with that.
I just don't know. We don't know if it's going to work because it's not built. Build it, it may work, and then you save yourself some money.
And the...
But you may be wasting money because it may not work, and they may get in there, and you have to do something else. But still, rather than create a variance request on something that's yet to be shown to have been built at this time, saying, "I need it," when you not necessarily know if you need it or not, is a little bit, that skirts the line for me as far as variances. Any discussion virtually? Any questions for Jeff? Anyone here? All right. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Jeff, is there anything else?
No.
I entertain a motion regarding case number 2669.
I'll make a motion to deny the variance request in case 2669.
They will still be able to build the fence as instructed?
Yes.
Without just no barbed wire? Okay. There's a motion to deny. Is there a second?
A second.
There is a second. All in favor live for that motion. Virtually, there is a motion to deny with a second. We have voted live. Commissioner Rigby, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Murphy, sorry.
I vote yes to deny the variance.
Okay. All right. It is denied. Five to one. Thank you, Jeff. All right. Case number 2670 is Royal Group LLC. They have filed a request for a special exception as to Section 2.6.8, the front yard build-to-line maximum for property located at Highway 30. Gray?
Yes, sir. Subject property is located on a narrow one-acre parcel on the south side of Highway 30, directly east of Highway 30 Collision. Applicant is proposing a service station that will include a single-story building that has a convenience store and a commercial space. Site is currently flat with grass and is pad-ready. The site will be accessed by an existing curb cut off of Highway 30 South. The applicant decided to go ahead with the special exception request before making a formal submittal to the Site Plan Review Committee. The request is to exceed the maximum front yard build-to-line of 50 feet by approximately 95.77 feet, a total of 145.77 feet from the property line. As allowed in Section 2.6.8 of the Land Development Code, a front yard build-to-line of up to 150 feet may be requested by special exception in the suburban corridor zoning district. The applicant states that due to the narrow width of the lot and uses planned, the building must be set back nearly 150 feet from the property line to allow for proper vehicular clearance in and around the site. Service stations are considered special use in suburban corridor. Pumps will be situated in the front yard, and there is a row of parking proposed in the front of the commercial spaces. Site design standards will be addressed when the applicant submits a formal proposal to the Site Plan Review Committee. The staff recognized that the property directly to the east is located outside of the city limits and has commercial zoning with Lafayette County. It currently has established residential uses there. Staff believes that this unique circumstances, in this unique circumstance, evergreen plantings should be installed along the eastern border of this property to buffer the residential use from the service station use. Section 5.7.6.2 states, "A 15- to 25-foot buffer is required between commercial uses on sites of less than one acre and any property zoned primarily for residential uses." This particular property is approximately one acre, and it's zoned next to, the residential use that's in the county is actually zoned commercially, but as I stated, has existing residential housing on it. Staff feels that if the planning commission considers approving this request, a condition should be made to require an evergreen buffer along the eastern border of this property and the adjacent residential use. As stated in the application and observable along this portion of Highway 30 East, this front yard build-to-line with available parking in the front yard reflects the standard building patterns for commercial properties in this suburban stretch of highway. The peculiar shape of this lot further limits the ability of vehicular access to the site. Staff recommends of the, staff recommends approval of this requested special exception with the two conditions stated in the report. This is also one of Jeff's projects.
Jeff, I assume that what is shown in the northern part of the lot is our gas pumps, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Just making sure. All right. Any questions for Mr. Williams?
This is Commissioner Freeman. I have one.
Go ahead, Bill.
And that's what's going to happen to the area behind the store and the commercial space?
We've got detention traps off, and there's, we've got our detention in the rear area.
So there's no development plan next there at all?
No, sir.
Thank you, Jeff.
Any additional questions? All right. Hearing none, I will entertain a motion on case number 2670.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve with the conditions stated.
There's a motion to approve with the conditions stated. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. There is a second. All in favor for live vote. All right. I see you, JR, but I got to ask you. How do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Last case on the agenda for the night is case number 2666. It is Richard and Jane Cross, and they have filed for a special exception as provided in Section 3.5.8.2. It's Residential CID or Common Interest Development District for property located at 308 North 16th. Ben, is this yours?
It is. I'm sure most on the commission's familiar with this property, but it's Lot 3. It's on the backside of the existing Shaw house over here on, you know, Jackson Avenue. But this one actually comes off of North 16th. Currently, there's an existing structure. It was constructed around 1980. The Crosses are intending to purchase this property, and they'll move into the existing structure while they construct a new home. Once they have that home constructed, they will, they will use the existing structure for their mother. And in order to facilitate this, the applicant needs to create a residential common interest development, which will allow these two dwellings to be on the same lot. When located in an existing subdivision or in a historic district or inside the conservation overlay district, a residential common interest development is approvable by special exception from the planning commission. And understandably, the Crosses do not wish to proceed with acquiring the property until they have some sort of an assurance whether this would be possible or not. Last month, at the Historic Preservation Commission, the Crosses did appear for them for a non-action item just to inform the commission of their, of their plans. And the commission did have some, some discussion. They wanted to make sure that this was exactly as proposed. It was going to be those two existing dwellings, and it wouldn't be a larger development with multiple homes. And, and that was acknowledged. That's, that's exactly what they're proposing to do. And the commission was, was supportive with them proceeding to the planning commission. Staff, we do not have any objections to the requested special exception, but we would like to limit this request to the two principal dwellings. But we think it's okay and appropriate for, you know, if the Crosses wish to propose an accessory structure like a carport or a shed or something like that, that they would be able to do that. But additional dwellings, they would have to come back for either, for reconsideration for a special exception for the common interest development. And additionally, the Historic Preservation Commission will ultimately approve, review the proposal for what is going to be constructed, and they'll have to, to approve that as well for, through a certificate of appropriateness. Also, the applicants will be required to provide covenants, which is a condition of approval. So therefore, staff recommends approval of this request with the following conditions: that staff supports the request for the RC, the residential common interest development for the two principal structures on the property as presented, and any proposed additional principal structures will require a new special exception. And then number two, that the applicant provide covenants for the common interest development prior to the issuance of building permits. I can tell you that I have received this afternoon, I actually had a conversation with an adjacent property owner, Mr. Bruce Belandi, and I believe he's in the room, wishes to speak this evening. Additionally, former Mayor Hoaworth also called, and he's in the room as well. But before they get to speak, I think that the Crosses are here in case you have any questions for them.
Ben, let me ask you a quick question. Are they going to be metered, the two homes residences together, or will they have separate meters?
They'll be separate meters. It's not like a, an accessory dwelling unit where we only require a single meter. This would be much more like a, you know, just like individual homes.
Okay.
Hey, Ben, I've got a question for you.
Okay.
So you mentioned that if we, if we approved this common interest development, it would just be for those two structures. And I guess my question is just to clarify, what is anything we're granting that runs with the land? Because I'm thinking down the road, if they decide to sell this property and move on, does the buyer of the property have any right to any other kind of common interest development besides what's there when the Crosses leave?
Not beyond what's actually granted this evening. So, you know, if a future homeowner was to purchase one or both of the structures, they would be subject to the same provisions of this, of this granting of the special exception.
It runs with the land.
But only this specific granting, not, you know, RCID in general?
Right. Should they have, should they sell it at a point in the future, a new owner would not be able to build multiple, you know, multiple structures or other structures. They would have to come back before the commission to, to request that because we're limiting this, this approval to exactly what, what is being proposed in this drawing. And, and that's a representative footprint. That's not the actual, that's not the actual footprint that they're proposing, but I mean, it gives you an idea.
So it's a limited CID?
Correct.
Thank you, Ben.
Commissioner Freeman, Commissioner Murphy, do you have any questions for the commission or the Crosses?
No, from Freeman.
None.
Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on this? Mr. Belandi? All right.
Thank you for the opportunity to comment on this request. The problem I have with this is this diagram is misrepresented. Sid Bryan does not own the easement, that's the jetty to the far left going to North 16th Street. That should not be plotted as part of that subdivision lot. I have documentation here, 1898, that property was sold to the Levels. I own that lot south. Richard owns the lot north. That was created as a perpetual easement for the mutual access of the parties involved. But at that time, that was Hubert Price, who sold it to the Shaws and the Levels, from whom I bought the property. So that's a misrepresentation. I did not want to let that pass. I know the Crosses are a nice couple. I have nothing against what's been proposed for their home. I do object to the misrepresentation of this being, that property that is being construed as being owned by and therefore possibly controlled by Sid Bryan or whoever purchases.
And just, just so I'm clear, I want to make sure, this is representative only. Nothing is fine, they would, the Crosses would not own it, nor would they establish ownership unless they filed something with the chance record. Any determination as to what they are purchasing is from whom or as to perpetual easements, all that's on file with the chance record. What I, if we approve this, it won't be, we don't, they call it meets and bounds, meaning we're not approving, we're not approving the parameters of where this happens. We're just approving the ability to then later say, "All right, my common interest development starts at point A, goes to point B, C, D, and finishes up at E." Okay? That would be filed in the chance record. So technically speaking, and I believe I'm correct, Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, but what we're doing is, has nothing to do with ownership of an easement or a road or even the parameters of where this CID is. It's just the ability to create one. Okay?
Yeah. I just question the fact that this is not property that this person owns. I mean, that's a misrepresentation.
Sure.
Very concerned about that.
Yeah, but Bryan, I would just point out that this is shown as a conceptual site layout. So in my mind, what we're looking at is, this is how the applicant shows us the property is going to be used, and that little dog ladder, whatever we call that. It's fun, but there's a little driveway that comes through there. And I think Ben said that that driveway is intended to be used as, as a driveway. So I mean, if there was planning to be a house built on top of there or something, we might want to take a look at it. But no, nothing about this makes any claim of ownership or can change.
And Mr. Belandi, I'll also state that we're not even approving any access to it. Okay? If for some reason, your ownership and the ownership of others, and you decide, "I don't want him to get there through this drive," you can do that, obviously. But we're not approving that he can use the road or anything like that. It's just simply that he can put two separate single-family residents onto one lot. That's it.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Bill?
Good evening. I'm Bill Wheeler. I own the two lots behind this proposed development. The Shaw property was quite controversial six or seven years ago when we were dealing with it. I had an easement across part of the property. We finally, we sued each other, and we finally came to a compromise, and the compromise that this lot would be a single-family lot. That was one of the compromises. I had a 25-foot, and still do, 25-foot easement into their property along my property line, preventing any development as they have a 25-foot easement into my property to prevent any development. The whole point was to keep it somewhat in its natural state, but also a single-family dwelling. And here we are now, Sid's wanting to sell it, and the first thing they want to do is come back and put another couple of houses. I have nothing against any person particularly, but we were warned that this might happen. I'm opposed to it. This, we dealt with it six or seven years ago. It's a single-family resident lot. That's the way it was approved by this commission. I think that's the way it ought to stand. And everybody ought to keep, know what they've done, where we're going. And right now, I'm opposed to turning it into a double, double houses on the, on the single lot. Thank you.
Is that agreement in writing, Bill?
The settlement agreement is in writing. And the easements, of course, are filed at the courthouse. There was also a slither of property given at the top of the, the hill that covers a couple of cedar trees that I see on this, which... a couple of cedar trees that I see on this, uh, which he conveyed to, to us.
Sure.
So we, there's a slither of property that I don't see represented in this diagram, and I don't see the twenty-five foot easement, uh, part, as we're all, it's hard to talk with these masks on, but I don't see those, uh, represented in this drawing. And so I think for the community, for that area, for the history, uh, it should stay a single family lot. Thank you.
Mr. Commissioner, let me ask, Paul, the settlement agreement that they're talking about, do you know, have you seen that?
I think it's possible that I have some years ago, I know there was litigation that went on, and I, I, I don't have probably a, on me, and I wouldn't, I didn't have enough time to sacri- to pull it. I, I don't think, as I go back and look, the, this was in July of fourteen, that there were four or five different matters that came about this property. I, I don't find that whatever that condition was, that that was a condition of any of the approvals that were granted, I think the subdivision plat would have been the one that affected this property, because the, um, the newer developments were gonna be on those adjacent lots on either side of the Shaw property. The only thing I can find is that the staff report says, there's a note that life free contains one single family home on one point five acres as a description, but none of the conditions on approval of that plat have, have a limitation. So it doesn't look like the city put that.
It's not in the city, but it may mean that.
Yeah, and if there's, if there's an agreement between private parties, then doesn't let, doesn't let that happen. That could very well be, but I don't think it's a city condition.
Yeah. Okay.
Mr. Howarth?
Mr. President, this is Bill Freeman, I, I couldn't hear all of the comments there.
I will, I will try and recap, and Paul can tell me if I'm wrong. What he stated is, the only thing of record that we show is a change where the city at some point in time, pre-us, pre our involvement on the planning commission, where it granted the plat and simply noted that this one point five acres had a single family residence located on it. There was nothing or no qualifications or restrictions placed on it by the city when creating the neighborhood plat. The agreement in which Mr. Wheeler is talking about, I assume, is from private litigation between the owners and some, located somewhere, um, but it's not filed, um, in any matters, nor was the city a party to that lawsuit.
Thank you.
Mr. Howarth?
Good evening. Uh, thank you, Ben. Uh, if you'll just give me a few minutes. Uh, first of all, appreciate what y'all do. I know this, this, uh, planning commission is, you get a lot of heat-seeking missiles sometimes, and, uh, I know it's, this is hardest job there is in the city, maybe. He, Sid also promised to renovate the Shaw house. Do, do you have the capacity to project images?
Uh, Sid, give me one second. Well, no, I mean, just give me one second. We can turn it off. When we turn the, uh, over, we can get around.
See it right up to, hey, Richard, look up, see that, that's your camera, on the ceiling.
Yeah, and you see the paper clip right there on there? Put it next to that and, yeah.
That, that's a Shaw house that Sid promised to renovate. I also wanted just to kinda orient you to the neighborhood a little bit. Lisa and I have lived in this neighborhood for all but four of the years that we've been together, and I hesi- hesitate to tell you how many years that is, 'cause, one, I'm not sure, and two, it's just high math. Um, th- this, I'll just go from here.
That's it.
Yeah, that's, that's, uh, on Madison Avenue. I'm gonna show you some of the parking issues we've had. That's where people park on the right way in the past. Okay.
Now I'm away from my notes. And that is a house that's directly across the street from the drive to the property that's being discussed tonight. That is an, that is a, a former, a single family home that now has three tenants and no parking places.
Just eating with your nose. And then you. All right. Hey Ben, can you reshare the screen? I'm not seeing the screen share at the moment.
That's just, uh, that's a house on Madison, uh, a, a single family home, former single family home, that, uh, had, has two driveway pads, uh, that, on the morning I took that picture, had two cars on one pad, three cars on the other pad, and four vehicles in front of the house. So eight cars that belonged to one house. Okay? Next one. Uh, that's the same house. They got three mailboxes there, so it, so that I sup- sup- assume it's legal for three people to live there. Go ahead. Uh, that's just another view of Madison, looking toward the square, uh, next to the condominium complex on the right, and that's a poorly designed parking bay there that increasingly is being used by people, uh, who wanna park for free, who work on the square or go to the square. Another picture is sort of the same row of houses, to give you just an idea of the number of cars, the difficulty. That's further down the street, same deal. And then those colored things. This is a city garbage truck trying to come around the corner, but because of the cars parked right there, that's directly in front of our house and directly in front of the driveway, uh, of the subject property, can't get around. Uh, he has to back up, go around, go ahead, turn on, next one. And so what the city did was they came along, that's not a sidewalk, 'cause it's on a slant, they just put, they cemented the, the lawn of that property, uh, so the truck could roll on top of it, yet the truck continues to gash the property. Go ahead. This is all because of the narrow streets, the parking problem. Same thing up the, up the street where the, the, uh, uh, garbage truck can't get around that corner because of the cars that are usually parked there. Uh, and those are the cars that are parked on the street in front of our house at that same turn. Go ahead. Okay. And, um, I kinda go through all that to explain that we don't want more of the same, uh, coming onto the subject property. And with two houses, while I have absolutely nothing against the crosses, and I, I hope to look forward, uh, look forward to being good neighbors with them, um, the, the problem is, a special exception follows the property and not the crosses, right?
It will follow the property, not the crosses.
So if they decide to move, or, uh, I, I understand they haven't even bought the property yet, they, they might decide, as many people have in the past during my time here with the city, when getting a special exception, to try to increase the value of their property, then turn around and sell it without doing what they said they needed to have, had to have done. Uh, and I don't want that, that to happen. Often, on these cases of special exceptions, um, as I say, there, some people do it to increase the value of the property, and then they turn around to you and say, well, what's wrong with that? Increase the value of your property too, which is false. Uh, it's, this decre- increases, situations like this decrease the value of my property. So that's my, uh, problem with the proposal, and I, you know, it was agreed when we went through all these negotiations with Sid, they were just gonna be one house, and now they want two, so, thank you.
Hold on a second. Let me ask you this. Is, and this is, again, a question, I, I work there, you know where I work, I, I see Madison, I understand. Are you indicating that whenever, whatever's built, that they will have to park on Madison to get to the home?
Uh, no, but it could be that they have visitors, or it could be that the people who own the property, after they do have visitors.
Sure.
It could be that there is, like, one of the houses that we've, that I showed you is essentially a paternity house, and they have people that park in the street, and also go in, in and out of that gravel driveway. Our, our bedroom is right on that side of the house, uh, the Belandys and, and, and we do not wanna pay that, we want to leave it, it's part of kind of old Oxford, um, plus people don't think it's a street if it's a gravel driveway.
Any more questions for any, Mr. Howarth or anyone else?
I have a question. Um, it, it sounds, from what I've understood, and I couldn't see the figures that were presented, but from what I understand, the objection is to the property going into, uh, we'll say, less desirable hands than the crosses, and being used as a, you know, multi- occupancy, whatever, uh, with parking that affects the streets and, um, and adverse nuisances that affect the Howarths and others. I guess my question is, i- is any of that directly related to the residential, uh, common interest development, or is it just an issue of having two structures versus one under any arrangement?
It's, it's a issue of having two structures versus one.
Okay.
Simply because that'll be more people, uh, more people in and out, uh, and eventually, I mean hypothetically, um, what I'm suggesting, 'cause as I say, we've been in this neighborhood for forty-five years, we've seen it happen over time, bit by bit, piece by piece, and I don't want that to happen essentially in my backyard.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I do have a couple of questions.
For me?
No, not for you. You're on. Paul, uh, are there some subdivisions in the community that have written into their covenants, you know, single family lot, single family one, single family residence? I feel like we've come across that before.
I'm certain there are, nothing I've been to date with, they are all the time in my head, but I'm sorry, I was confused.
Yeah, there we go. There are parts of the city where it's written into the covenants, not so much through a settlement agreement, that it's a single family residence for a single lot, right?
I'm, I'm sure there are. I couldn't name those examples off the top of my head, but I know we've seen that.
Okay, all right.
And let me go one step further, this CID's gonna, let's just go down the line here, the CID would have to have covenants as well, correct?
Yes, I believe so.
And it'd have to have covenants which could include a covenant as to use of the structures, meaning single family only.
I don't know why that couldn't exist.
I'm just asking. I mean, I'm not saying it's gonna happen, I'm just saying that's, that's a, it's a covenant just like a neighborhood restrictive covenant would be, correct?
Yes.
You could write covenants in any way, you can have any covenant you want, included in a CID, just like a neighborhood.
Yeah, the, the CID structure is a, a lot like what we think of as the condominium form of ownership.
Sure.
When, when we wrote the new code, we sorta moved away from the use of the word condominium in several different contexts, 'cause that often got confused about what that actually meant. But yeah, just like you would expect in a condominium development where you have individually owned footprints and commonly owned, common areas, you, you could certainly have restrictive covenants or declarations that govern any aspect of that.
All right, so let me, I'm sorry, do you have another question? Do you have another question?
No.
Okay. All right, so let me ask you this. This CID, would it be different, are there, is there something with this situation that causes us to have a CID as opposed to another lot somewhere else in this community where someone wants to build a second home? Or would they also have to have a CID?
It's not an accessory structure. Well, this is a second home, right, on one lot.
That's one thing, is that it, it, it's not an accessory structure, and we do have mechanisms in the code that provide for accessory structures. This is contemplating two primary structures. I think we talked about this at some point.
Yeah, and I'm not talking about an accessory, I'm talking about someone else in stone subdivision wants to build a second home on a lot.
Right. So, uh, uh, previously, there was a provision in the code that allowed for two principal structures on a single lot. Um, however, that only actually applies now in the, in the current code to commercial properties. And so, and I think the mechanism that, uh, the new code contemplated was that when you had two principal structures on a lot, you're creating a co- a condominium or common interest development, and so therefore you would need to make sure that you abide by the following, uh, filing regulations, you would have to have a special exception, you would have to have the covenants, you would have to have all those items in place for it to be, uh, be granted. And so, um, in this situation, um, that, that's the only option that was available to the crosses. You couldn't further subdivide the property, um, you know, that, that wasn't available, um, you know, because number one, it's, uh, in an existing subdivision, you would have to go through an amendment process, but number two, it would create a flag lot, which is, uh, which is actually prohibited in the conservation overlay district. Um, and, and so the only option available to, to this situation would actually be the common interest development. The existing structure, uh, that, that's on the site couldn't be considered an accessory, I suppose it could be considered an accessory dwelling, but you would have to seek a myriad of variances, uh, to allow it, it exceeds the size limitations, it's located in the front yard, it's, uh, you know, so this one's a lot more complex than, um, um, you know, than, than simply just, um, you know, facilitating it by, uh, by that mechanism, so that's why they opted to go for the common, common interest development.
Um, my, my question is, to Mr. Wheeler's point about, uh, any, you know, prior litigation, um, is that some, is that, what should our role, that, I mean, that's not, it doesn't bind the city, but nonetheless, if that's there, is, is, I mean, to me, that's something that I, I, it seems like I would wanna know for sure or have resolved, uh, if there is, you know, such a restrictive covenant, you know, that already said this lot cannot be, uh, you know, have, it has to be a single family home, uh, si- single family resident, uh, lot, so. And not only through a, let, let me piggyback, not only through a settlement agreement, but also through the initial covenants. But I don't know if that's something, for us, if that's any of our business or not. So that's what I wanna know.
No, Marvin, it's a good question, and it, it should be your instinct to wanna know the answer to that question. The problem is, whether you talk about, um, a, a settlement or a judgment that's reached in litigation or a covenant that's, that has been filed, our staff doesn't have a good way to screen out the universe of things that could apply to a piece of property to restrict it from doing something that the law would otherwise allow it to do.
Mm-hmm.
And so we have asked y'all repeatedly throughout the years, that unless there has been a piece of litigation that we're aware of, because the city's been involved in, that the city has been prohibited or enjoined from, from allowing a piece of property to be used in a certain way, or unless it contravenes something that's either in one of the city's codes or an approval or a denial that's, that's come before, that we not, and that's why I was looking back at the subdivision, um, minutes from back in twenty fourteen, to make sure we didn't put a condition on it, um, that affected what we can do to that, because we can control for that, we can't control for the, the universe of other things. So it's very possible for somebody to come in and make a very good argument for why y'all wanna give them a special exception or rezone, whatever, and it's something they flat can't do, because their neighbor would have the right to go, you know, get a restraining order against them, or put up a, a fence that would prohibit them from doing that. But that's not our staff's function, and it would be very difficult for them to be able to adequately police that. We, we have to look at that as third-party property rights.
Right, I, I don't, and to add on to that, and I, I don't think our members are here to play a court. If there's some agreement that needs to be enforced, there are mechanisms to have that agreement enforced outside of us, playing court and enforcing agreements that are between two private parties outside of us.
'Cause I promise you, our judges aren't gonna care a whit about y'all deciding something.
Yeah.
That's for them to decide.
We, we play no part in any of that.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I, I have another question for Paul. Um, there was a discussion a little bit earlier about- Um, there was a discussion a little bit earlier about the CID covenants. Um, Paul, would you, uh, do the covenants only apply to the common parts of the land? Or can the covenants restrict uses of the individual, uh, structures?
I'm not looking at the section of the code that deals with that right now, JR, but in the abstract, if you're splitting up a piece of property into different footprints and different interests, I don't know of any reason that you could not create covenants that did that. I mean, does that make sense?
Yeah.
And, and Ben, do you know of anything in the code that would keep them from doing that?
No, there's no, no specific language or specific requirements for, for the covenants.
Ben, let me ask you this question as well. Um, in terms of, you know, the, the mother-in-law requests, let's just call it like that, you know, um, that comes through on another piece of property, you know, in another part of the town. What are you gonna look at when making a determination about whether that's approved or not? Or supported, I guess, is the best word.
I think it's a, I think it's case by case, Duncan. I mean, I think we have to evaluate the circumstances there. Uh, typically, we get the mother-in-law request is a new accessory dwelling that's provided, and we have a whole mechanism that we, uh, proceed with there. I think the fact that, um, you know, you know, this site is, um, you know, I mean, it's, it's very unique. Its conditions are unique. I think the development around it's unique. I think it's been something that, um, you know, this commission or, you know, commissions, you know, prior have considered, uh, you know, for many years, um, you know, so I think, um, I think it's difficult to answer, uh, that question, other than saying that we're gonna evaluate it on a case-by-case basis.
Okay.
The one person we've not heard from is the applicant. And Mr. Cross. Commissioner Murphy, Commissioner Freeman, chime in if you have a question. After Mr. Cross. Go ahead, Richard.
First of all, thank you for the, uh, the opportunity to be here tonight. I do appreciate the, uh, the work that all of you do, and I appreciate, uh, Ben and the folks in the planning office, excuse me, for, uh, for their, their help, kind of walking us through this process. The, the reality is, we're trying to build a home for our family in a great location in downtown Oxford. We understand the historical significance of the, the downtown square extended area, and frankly, didn't think that we would be at a point where we might be able to move into this particular part of town. This particular property is attractive to us in large part because of the structure that exists right now. It is not large enough for our family of five with three dogs. Uh, we have, uh, moved into it temporarily in hopes of being able to purchase this and, uh, and construct a house. But the reason it's attractive is because Jane's father, my father-in-law, is, uh, he's in poor health. It doesn't necessarily mean there's anything imminent there, but one of the things that he has asked Jane and me is that we would consider, as we move forward, uh, something that would, uh, be a, a good landing spot for, uh, for Jane's mom as well. I'm sorry, Mr. Wheeler, that we have not met. Prior to, uh, tonight, I should've come and, and seen you. Uh, I have had extended conversations with both the Hoaworths and the Belandys, and have enjoyed those conversations. Um, hopefully, we can get through all of this and just set this part of it beside and realize this is just part of kind of operating procedure and getting to a point. I would point out that the, the hypothetical that Mr. Hoaworth raised a moment ago about, you know, if we were to one day sell the property, and I certainly don't have a crystal ball nor the ability to predict, predict the future, but it's really no different than any other home that's in downtown Oxford. If Mr. Hoaworth sold his property, it could be bought by someone who then chose to allow students to live in it. And then it would be quote-unquote "student housing" in the middle of a historic part of downtown Oxford. So I don't think that makes this unique, other than the fact that we are trying to build a home for our family on it. And the other thing that I think is important to, to point out is that it feels, as we kind of go through this conversation, uh, there's pretty clear, uh, clearly, in, in some areas, ill will directed toward Sid Brian's Development Company and the way that maybe they've approached some things. And maybe it's just part and parcel that we are now the recipients of some of that ill will as it is passed on from, you know, the, the next potential purchaser of the property. Uh, I'm not sure that that's fair. I, I don't know that fairness matters one way or the other in here. Uh, we have, uh, ultimately chosen this method of seeking the, the exception for the R C I D based on the recommendations of a number of people that says this is the mechanism that will allow you to achieve, uh, your goals pending the approval of the commission. Any questions for me or for us, or?
Any questions for the applicant, virtually speaking?
Yes, this is Bill Freeman. Uh, were you aware of Mr. Wheeler's firm?
Uh, no, Mr. Freeman. This was actually the first time that I had heard of, uh, the, um, I guess, litigation related specifically to there only being one property. I was aware that there was, what has been termed to me as a landscape buffer. You said twenty-five feet. I was under the impression it was twenty feet, but whatever that number is. I mean, five feet is not a significant difference, but I was not aware, uh, that there was, uh, litigation or a settlement that dictated only, uh, one primary residence could be on the, uh, on the property.
Okay, and one other question, and that's the, uh, the easement, I guess, section of the property that Mr. Beland referenced, where it's shown on the, the materials we got as the property line, and he's saying it's really an easement across there as opposed to that being part of the current property, the Shaw Place subdivision property?
Yes, sir. Um, so Nicholas Brown at, uh, at Hughes Brown, uh, has done the title work on this property for us. And, uh, I understand, Mr. Belandi and I have actually spoken about this. Let the echo clear up. We've spoken a little bit about this, and he kind of told me what he believed to be, um, his ownership claim. The, uh, the title work, and, and I'm not a lawyer, so if I don't say this exactly right, forgive me, but as I understand it, and the way, uh, Attorney or Counselor Brown has explained it to me, there's actually joint ownership of that particular property based on the Belandys and whoever is the owner of Lot Three, and the Hoaworths have, um, an easement on, on that as well because of their property being adjacent. Um, I, I think Mr. Belandi referenced having, uh, some of the, the work that goes back to the late eighteen hundreds or early nineteen hundreds. Um, Nicholas, when he explained through and kind of showed me all the documents that he had, uh, also did title work back to the, uh, the early nineteen hundreds. And we believe that there is a clear ownership stake for both, um, that would, at very worst, give us co-ownership of that property. But whether or not there is ownership, quitclaim deeds, or just an easement, I'm not really sure that that's the, the question that ultimately we're seeking an answer to tonight. The, the question that, as we stand here tonight, we believe is about, uh, the residential exception. Uh, because if all there is is an easement, which we don't believe is the case, that still would just be a driveway accessing the property in which we're, uh, attempting to build on.
Thank you, that's all my part.
I, I just wondered, are you using the, the easement goes all the way up to Jackson Avenue, or do you use it now?
Hold on, Lisa. Do you?
It goes from Madison, the end of Madison House to Jackson Avenue. And I'm wondering why, if that's not being used, why that can't be the access? Rather than our little, uh, just, uh, pretty free.
Well, it is a public street.
Well, hold on a second. I, again, easements and legal title and, um, rights of access are all for courts to decide. Um, again, I, I don't even know if the property's changed hands yet. Uh, if there's been a sale or what's defined in the sale or what. From my understanding, and this is just, again, for everybody's edification, the point being is, what was on that map is just conceptual in nature. It has no legal binding whatsoever. It is simply, we want, the question before us is simply, can we put two, can we form a CID of some common interest development of, with some parameters to be defined legally later, which allows us to put a, two single-family homes on one lot?
Yeah, and, uh, Brian, to Marvin's point a few minutes ago, and Bill, this goes to what you asked a minute ago. I really don't want y'all to get hung up on the question of who has ownership and in what right and how many hundreds of years it, it goes back. I will tell you, my impression, after looking back at this and talking with a couple of the lawyers that have been involved, is that, and y'all can correct me if you think I'm wrong, but I, I think what I heard tonight here is that everybody generally agrees that there is a driveway on that sliver and that the property that the crosses are here about can be accessed by that driveway, that whoever owns the property back behind the Shaw House can use that driveway to come back and forth. I think that, the, 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 the question was, who has the, the fee ownership? And that doesn't matter for, for y'all, okay? If they, if they eventually decide that, you know, Richard's understanding or Nicholas's understanding is, is wrong for some reason, that doesn't affect in any way the approval that they're coming here to, to ask for. And that'll just mean that the neighbors will, will have to get that sorted out. So I, I, that's, that's what I want y'all to, to remember, is if, if somebody's got a right to go put up a fence in front of that driveway and keep it from being accessed from over there by Madison, that's not a right that y'all can give or take away or increase or decrease.
That's right. We can't confer ownership of any piece of any property in Oxford to anyone. We're just here to decide what, whether or not they meet the definition or whether or not they meet the standards to have two properties or two residences or two homes on to one, what is deemed one lot. That's it. No agreement, no settlement agreement, no, all that's outside of our purview and outside of our discretion and really outside of our ability to consider. So, any more questions for anyone, whether it be planning, uh, the applicant, or, or someone else?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Richard, um, would you oppose if you had new facility metered to the old facility as well? Can you hear me?
Yeah, I'm sorry. One more time.
Would you oppose to having the new home metered, the old home? So that there's one meter as opposed to multiple meters? That was something I know in the past, um, and I don't even know if it's still in the code, but to kind of keep and make sure it was done with that intent, the bill with that intent just for down the road. And I think that, again, you, you said it right. We're just, we're here talking about a second home on a single lot, but we're, for me, we're talking about something much larger than just y'all right now.
Sure.
You know?
I, I don't.
I, I don't know that I would want my answer to that to be binding. My, my initial reaction is I would not necessarily oppose that, but I probably would like to explore that a little farther before kind of locking that in as a permanent.
Okay.
Yes, I absolutely do, or no, I absolutely don't. Is, is that fair?
Yeah, no, that's, um...
I mean, Duncan, I, I just, I think that that, you know, in the past is specifically applied to accessory dwellings, so that way, um, you didn't have somebody that maybe sold that as a separate unit or used that as a separate unit. I think in this case, that's exactly what we're acknowledging, is that this is gonna be a separate unit. Um, you know, which is, uh, you know, I mean, I thi- I think there is an, an unknown. I mean, if it were to be sold at some point in the future, then, um, I think that that would put some limitations on that being used, uh, used again, resold, um, or how it would be resold, um, in the future. Um, I understand that's probably what you're trying to get to, but I think, um, I think that that, uh, might put a, uh, might present a, um, you know, a hardship there as well.
I think it might, it might be, it's possible that there are logistical problems with that. I think Rob Naingling has told...
Would have to weigh in as well.
That, that there are circumstances where that, that, for whatever reason.
And it's still one lot, correct? I mean, it's a CID, yes, I'm assuming approved, it's a CID, but I can't sell Structure A and outside, I, it still has to be common ownership because that's what it's, that's what it is.
Correct.
The, the property in common would be common.
Sure, but there's no, there's no amendment of a plan to separate it. So without that, you have to sell the whole property unless you subdivide it, which has to come for us for approval.
So, so you've got, you've got three pieces, right? I'm gonna get in trouble here.
You will.
So you've got three pieces, right? This is, this is thinking, thinking of what we used to think of as a two-unit condominium. You have, we, Unit A, you have Unit B, and then you have C, which is common area. Now, you have declarations that are gonna, gonna govern how C is owned and maintained and, and all that stuff, much simpler in a, a two-unit than it is in a hundred unit. But the owner of A and the owner of B are always gonna be saddled with C, right? They're always, they're always gonna have to maintain, they're going to own the bulk of the, the physical portion of that land jointly. But the owner of A and the owner of B don't have to be the same person.
It can be.
It, it can be, sure. You, you, you could own both of those things, but in the examples, i- i- in, in what the crosses are telling you now, I mean, you know...
I understand.
Yeah, Mr. and Ms. Cross could own A, and the mother and father-in-law could own B. And, and so that, that could be different all the way down. But yes, the, the, the property as an entirety, if you wanted to alienate that, that whole thing, well, I'm gonna start talking about hypotheticals that, that, that don't exist yet. But, but, but yeah, that would have to, that would have to go as a, a common unit of, of some form.
But the two structures themselves deny it to be sold as one?
No.
So...
Joseph, you've been quiet. Any questions from you?
No, I think we've pretty much covered it. Uh, I'm just listening here and, and kind of thinking, but, uh, I think everything has been covered so far.
So I've, so just to bring this back to square one, you know, the, the issue is allowing a second home on a single-family, a single, a lot that is, the subdivision is one residence. So that's, that's the question, is whether or not we're gonna allow two homes. The, the CID is just the mechanism to make it happen, but the, the special exemption, exemption here is allowing two homes on a single-family lot.
But it still complies within the density limitations. And so, uh, you know, the density limitations is, uh, I believe it's six units per acre, uh, in the zoning district. So a common interest development inside a single-family neighborhood is not uncommon. As a matter of fact, you have some on the south end of this property, the Shaw property, and Kennedy Cove and, um, uh, Shaw, uh, I think Shaw Place.
On both the southeast and the southwest sides.
Right, and I think that those are maybe, you know, six, six units there as well. That's not what they're requesting here, but, um, so...
It's an acre and a half?
Yes.
So, just to recap for me, I mean, to me, there are actually three issues on the table. One is whether to allow two structures at all. And then there are two different ways that that's proposed. One is as an accessory dwelling, which would require several variances. And the other is to use the CID, uh, mechanism. But that brings with it separable ownership of the two structures. And, and so I think the, all three of those are being discussed in, in different ways here. I mean, I think the, uh, the neighbors are mostly concerned about having multiple structures, but I think even if we were to grant two structures, they would prefer that there wouldn't be separable ownership between those. Uh, so those are, those are the issues that I see. I, I think it's difficult, um, I mean, I think it's creative to use the common interest development in trying to avoid some of the other difficulties of having accessory dwelling for the purposes that the crosses, um, have for the property. But, um, you know, Commissioner Gray raised the issue of how we would treat the same idea in other parts of the city, um, and, you know, I know it's case... in other parts of the city, and, you know, I know it's case by case, but it seems, it seemed a little bit taller order to do a CID here for these purposes, just thinking about applying it around the city.
Yeah, and just to clarify, I don't think the accessory structure is really, I think, I don't think that's even feasible here, so even though it was discussed. Any more discussion? All right, Richard, anything else?
I think we're good.
All right, thank you. Okay. Hearing no, no further discussion from the commission, no further discussion from those in attendance here, is there anyone on virtually who may want to speak to the side? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion as to 2666, the special exception request for Richard and Jane Cross for the residential common interest development as to 308 North No motion?
A motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, this is Freeman.
I have a motion to approve and a second? All in favor, virtually? All in favor, all right, let me go one by one, sorry. Commissioner Rigby, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Freeman, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
No.
No.
Commissioner Gray? All right, well, I vote in favor.
In favor.
It is three to, three to three.
The motion fails to carry.
The motion fails to carry. All right. If anyone, the motion to approve failed to carry, so the case 266 is denied, correct? As a failure to carry the motion. All right, that includes, concludes our agenda. Is there anything else from the planning staff?
There is none.
All right, I have a motion to adjourn. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
There's a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
All right, Commissioner Rigby, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman, how do you vote? Commissioner Murphy, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Gray?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, we are adjourned.